Okay, we're going to call this meeting of the Longdale City Council and the Longdale Successor Agency to order. I'm going to ask the city clerk to give us the roll call.
Okay, good evening. Mayor Protem Kearney, council member Cuevas, council member Suarez.
Present.
Council member Talavera.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present except for council member Cuevas, who is currently absent.
Thank you. I'm going to ask council member Protem, Pat Kearney, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Pastor Greg Tucci for the prayer.
As your right hand over your heart, and repeat along with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Heavenly Father, we want to take a moment and thank you for the city of Longdale. Thank you for all the people who live their lives out here every day, who live and grow and send their kids to school and work in the city. We thank you for them. We ask you to bless them this year. For the city council and all the wisdom that they have to work with and all the ins and outs and the trials of being in public service, we ask you to bless them as well. There's temptations particularly in office, so we do remember them before you. You did ask us to pray for them in Second Timothy, and so we want to do that, Lord. May good things come from Longdale and may wisdom come from Longdale, and may the cities around look at this city and say, wow, that's how you do things. That's how you fix situations. That's how you work with difficulties. And I pray you'd give them that insight, Father, as they work in city government, local government, for the good of the people living here. So I do ask you and thank you for these things. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Okay, let's get a report from our sheriff's department. Let's hear from our captain, Nicole Palamino.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the city council and members of the community. I'm Nicole Palamino, the captain of South Los Angeles Station, and I will be presenting the public safety report for November 17th through today, December 1st. And regarding our notable arrests and investigations, on September 26th, a shooting occurred in the parking lot of the Dollar Tree store located at 40181 Redondo Beach Boulevard. The case was assigned to OSS Detective Sabatine. During the investigation, the shooter was identified as a male Hispanic juvenile and also an active member of the Longdale 13 gang. On November 11th, OSS detectives conducted an operation and detained the subject during a traffic stop, which took place as his mother was driving him to school. OSS detectives located a firearm in the subject's waistband during the detention. A search warrant was subsequently conducted at his residence, and the detectives recovered the clothes he was wearing during the shooting, along with other items indicative of Longdale 13 gang affiliation. The subject was charged with felony assault with a deadly weapon and possession of a loaded firearm, and he is a resident of Longdale. Then on November 19th, at approximately 1:00 a.m., Deputy Gus Rosales was patrolling near 145th Street and Condon Avenue when the driver of a vehicle failed to stop at a posted stop sign. Deputy Rosales conducted a traffic stop for the violation and discovered that the driver had a suspended license. During a search of the vehicle, Deputy Rosales located a large amount of marijuana, two vials of PCP, methamphetamine, a digital scale, and plastic baggies. In addition, the driver had a bag of cocaine on his possession. He was arrested for possession of narcotics for sales, and he was not a resident of Longdale. And then regarding our drug arrest stats, during the reporting period, Longdale deputies made 11 misdemeanor narcotics arrests for possession of various types of narcotics and possession of drug paraphernalia. And regarding our traffic-related incidents, Motorcycle Traffic Enforcement Deputy Morales issued 16 citations for various vehicle code violations such as failure to stop at a stop sign, failure to stop at a red traffic light, and speeding. And then lastly, I would like to remind the community about the annual Angel Tree Lighting Ceremony that will take place on Friday, December 5th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Longdale Civic Center. We will kick off the holiday season with festive music, food vendors, and many more cheerful activities. And this concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the captain's report? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let's hear from the Los Angeles County Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Manny Carion. I'm Battalion 18, covering the district for the A Platoon. Thank you for having me here, this opportunity to provide the overview of the fire department's call activity for the month of November. Our crews remain highly engaged throughout the month, responding on a wide range of incidents within the city for emergency services. For the month of November, the total of 185 calls were responded to. One was one fire, a modified structure fire. 128 EMS calls. Of those 128 EMS calls, four of them were from events provider units, services. One service call, 51 good intent calls, and four false alarms. Wanted to thank you for your time and your continuing support, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you had any.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any questions of the report? Thank you, sir. Okay, let's move our agenda. Let's move to oral communications. Oral communications, anyone want to speak to this body, either the Longdale City Council or the successor agency? You may do so at this time. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on at either screen to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Caitlin Coulter, the manager of the Longdale Library. I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware that our hours for this month for Christmas Eve will be closing at 5:00 p.m. We'll be closed Christmas Day, and we'll be closing at 5:00 p.m. on New Year's Eve and closed New Year's Day.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Andrew Blackney. I'm a resident of Longdale. I'd just like to make you guys aware that the South Bay Cities Council Governance Transportation Subcommittee is holding a meeting on December 8th, in which they're having an up or down vote on whether or not to support the having any metro project at all, regardless of alignment, regardless of whether it's bus, regardless of whatever it is. I know that we may have our disagreements with metro about where it goes, but I do believe we still would like to have some form of metro service in our area, and especially because we pay so much into this and we're not really reaping too many benefits of it currently. So I'd like to ask this board if they could just direct the city manager to send a letter saying, whatever you guys want to say, but just in support of just the idea of having the project. Because I think it's kind of crazy that they would, we'd ask them to go through all this work and then tell them, no, we don't want a project, just to try and kill it. I think that we pay a bunch of money into metro through our taxes and that we should be able to reap some of those benefits. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. This is for Sean, Dr. Moore. It's come to my attention, although I didn't get an email, but word on the street is you're leaving and you've accepted another position, which is too bad for Longdale, honestly. I met you when you were in planning and what have you, when I had an issue with code enforcement, and we disagreed, and you helped me through it, though, and as angry as I was in everything. You were always still willing to take the time and work with me. And then when you got your position as city manager, you have such passion to fight for Longdale and get stuff done here, and it shows, and it's been great. You're like one of the only ones that I can recall that's ever had some changes positive that got us some stores and different buildings and what have you, and you continue, and you're such a fighter. You're also pro-law enforcement, which is awesome for us. You know, always working with the sheriffs, Fourth of July is a big deal. I know you got out there, you know, on your own time and spent fourth and wanting to get those citations and what have you and just help out. I've sat with you in your office, and I only wanted to speak to you for a couple minutes. I think we sat for two hours, because you do like to talk, but that's okay. That's fine. I appreciate it. No city manager's going to do that, okay? I've known city managers over the years here. They wouldn't sit down with me and talk to me about my problem like you did and what have you. You sat and had a meeting with me and stuff. You've talked to me and everything. You make the city a much better place and what have you. It's just been great. I'm happy for you. I wish you well. I wish you weren't leaving. I hope we can get another city manager that has the passion that you have, the enthusiasm that you have, and continue to fight for Longdale. I see Pam has wrote a little email to you here, which is, I love Pam. She's still a big supporter of you also, you know, throughout all the years and stuff like that. You've done really well for us, and you are going to be Miss. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I wasn't planning on coming up at all, but after that, I just wanted also to say thank you to Dr. Moore. I'm wondering if, maybe he would have stayed if we just called him Dr. Moore instead of just Sean. Don't know. But we're going to lose a fighter for helping us fight metro against this ridiculous project. I am a metro rider. I say it all the time. I remember when there was an RTD bus. It was awesome. But now that the RTD has been bought up by LA Metro, that's all about rail, 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 and just plowing it down neighborhoods. Now that we have clean buses and not those big old diesel things back in the day, we should have more buses with protected bus lanes. Hawthorne Boulevard would work out so much better for students going to El Camino. I would take that bus. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. Okay, that'd be to close the public comments. Let's bring up the dice for comments from the council. Let's hear from council member Frank Talavera.
Good evening. I want to say thank you to those that are in attendance and those that are watching by the different formats that we're offering this meeting, and thank you to the librarian for the update on the hours, and I'm sure later, maybe on the next meeting, we'll get an update of all the great things that have happened at the library. So thank you for continuing your work there. Andrew, thank you for the information. I'm sure we'll talk about it and find out, make sure some of us go to that meeting. And Dina, thank you for your expression and your appreciation. And Annette also. So I'm going to reserve my other comments for Dr. Moore later on during our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Suarez.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out and also those who emailed comments. We do appreciate you voicing your opinion, and I think that's what's great about this country and our city, is that you can say your opinion. So I do appreciate that and for holding us accountable. I think that's very important, to hold our elected officials accountable. And one question, because the eighth resident asked if we could send a letter, but the eighth is next week. Does this need to be agendized, or at the very least, can we send whatever letter we've sent to metro to the COG?
I think the letter that you've sent to metro could be forwarded to the COG under either the mayor's signature or the city manager's signature stating simply that this is the city's position.
Okay. Thank you. With that, just want to thank everybody that came out tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Protem.
Okay, I want to thank everybody coming up this evening. Ms. Owens, I agree with you. The buses are underutilized. We have a metro system through Longdale. It's a buses. As you all know, I was a firm believer, number three and number four on that list, busted use or no build at all. So we do have buses, Mr. Blackley. And with that, I pass it on to you.
Okay, thank you. My librarian, thank you for the update on the library hours. Dana, thank you for the kind words you put in for the city manager, as well as Ms. Owens and Annette for the city manager. I would say my comments for the city manager as well, but I want to thank you both for understanding and recognizing the hard work of our city manager. Thank you. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. Okay, let's move our agenda. Okay, we finished with public comments. Let's do, let's move rather to item F. Item F is the consent calendar. I'm going to take, without objection, item F and item G with one motion, because both of them are consent calendars. One from the city council consent calendar and the other G is for the successor agency consent calendar.
If there's no subtraction additions, I make a motion to go with F and G.
Okay. The motion has been made that we approve the consent calendar, both F and G, the city council as well as the redevelopment agency.
And I'll second that motion.
Second it. Okay, there's a second by Talavera. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously with council member Cuevas currently absent and with the two items pulled.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is item H, the administration successor agency, consideration of the recognized payment obligation schedule.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman and agency member. This item is regarding the successor agencies for the Longdale Redevelopment Agency. For your consideration is two resolutions. Staff recommends that the agency members approve the resolution authorizing staff to submit the recognized payment obligation schedules to the LA County Second District Board Oversight Board for repayment of past debt owned by the agency. If this ROPS is approved, it would pay about $3.5 million in debt. So staff recommends that the successor agency direct and approve and direct staff to submit the ROPS to the Oversight Board and authorize staff for any changes once the Department of Finance reviews this item.
Very good. Any discussion on this item? If not, what is the pleasure this body concerning?
I'll make a motion, go with the statute of protection. Let me read it. Staff recommends the successor agency want to approve the direct staff to submit to Los Angeles County Oversight Board and California Department of Finance the ROPS 2627 and administrative budget 2627, and to authorize staff to make any changes requested by the California Department of Finance.
And that'd be your motion?
That's it.
Do I have a second?
And I'll second that.
Okay, the motion has been made by Kearney and second by Talavera. Any discussion on the motion? Will the successor agency please vote?
For item number G, the motion passes unanimously with council member Cuevas currently absent.
Okay, let's move to item 10. Approve on the Second Amendment to the Street Sweeping Service Agreement.
Good evening, council member and, I'm sorry, mayor and council members. I'm Luchu Rodriguez, Public Works Director, and I have here the Second Amendment to Street Sweeping Services. The Clean Street Company has been sweeping our streets for over 25 years. They have been reliable and consistently provided satisfactory level of service to the city of Longdale. On December 18th of 2023, city council approved the current agreement, and in March of 2024, city council approved the first amendment to the contract. Here in front of us is the Second Amendment for the contract, because the current agreement expires in December 31st of this year. The company has requested a 3% rate increase for this Second Amendment. So proceeding with this amendment will also need to appropriate extra funds in the amount of $11,000 to cover the new fee for this year. All the monies for these services comes from our gas tax budget. Staff recommends that city council authorizes the extra appropriations of funds and approve the Second Amendment with this company. There will be one more year of service, and then we will have to do a new agreement in a year from now, give or take. That's a staff report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay. Are there any questions of the staff report? If not, what is the pleasure this body concerning this item?
I'll make a motion to accept. Is ready?
The item has been accepted. A motion has been made by Mr. Pat Kearney that we accept as presented.
And I'll second the motion.
And seconded by council member Talavera. Any discussion on the motion? If not, will the council please vote?
For item number 10, the motion passes unanimously with council member Cuevas currently absent.
Okay, 11. Item 11 is approve the Third Amendment to the Contract Service Agreement for Public Works.
Good evening again. This item is for the Public Works and City Hall Facility Needs Project, where we have been upgrading the facilities at City Hall and Public Works. In May of 2024, city council awarded the contract to developers, general contracting. Now we are reaching the end of the project and the contract. All the improvements, they're visible in our facilities here of City Hall and these council chambers, for example. But there- But there's a few things left to be finished and completed. Therefore, staff is recommending that we extend the contract until June 30 of 2026 in order to complete the improvements and also to have time to close the project correctly. And that is, the funds are already in the account, so no additional funds. We're extending it for time only. Staff recommends City Council approve this Third Amendment. And that completes this report. If you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the report? Seeing none, I entertain a motion at this time.
I move that we accept this.
Okay, it's been spoken of by Talavira that we accept it.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number 11, the motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Cuevas currently absent.
Okay, item 12 is direction for request for proposal, Community Development Department's Building and Safety Services.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. This item is council, a request for council's direction for an RFP process for building and safety services. The Community Development Department has two functions, planning and building and safety. The building and safety portion of our department is contracted to the County of Los Angeles, and this contract has been in effect since the 1960s. It is, it became, staff became aware that the county intends to end this agreement effective July 1, 2026, which leaves the city needing to go out for an RFP to recruit the services of private engineers who can provide similar building and safety services. The existing operations of our building department consist of a building inspector inspecting about up to eight properties per day. It also includes a civil engineer reviewing residential improvement plans and commercial improvement plans for a variety of structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. And it includes a building official to provide day-to-day assistance. So staff is asking for council's directions. If we need to first go out for an RP, which we do, but and then secondly, do we need to change the hours of of the scope of services? Currently, as I mentioned, they provide part-time services, but there's opportunities to increase, to meet the demands of our residents who ask for a fast turnaround for building and safety services. So with with that, this item is just council's directions for the RFP process. It is recommended that the council consider authorizing staff to move forward with the RFP process or provide further direction to staff. The tentative timeline is to get the RFP by December 2025. The RFP reviewed by January 2026, and that we would bring a bid back to the council by February 2026. And hopefully, we would bring in a third-party engineering firm to work with the county to assist us in bringing the engineer up to speed. Staff, is there anybody answering any questions?
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of this report? If not, what is the pleasure of this body? Yes, ma'am. Cuevas.
Suarez.
Suarez, maybe.
No, no. No, Suarez, yeah.
Thank you. The question is, is it a possibility to look into whether we can hire a staff person? That might, I mean, I don't know, you know, $40,000 a month plus the extra additional cost. I don't know if that, you know, I do know that there's other added costs into hiring staff, but I don't know if we've looked at that as a possibility. Yeah, I know there's immediate need for, you know, the services, but also is that a possibility for the future?
Mayor, council, we definitely staff could look into that. I know we've evaluated it. It's a little more the the difference, you know, LA County, unfortunately, they've been focusing, you know, the word came down last year. We were understood about this impending change coming. They held off a long time for Longdale. And I even sent them an email and asked them again to give us a few more months since my departure to help out with the city to, you know, for the transition, but they said no. Today, we got official word that they can't. But we can definitely look at bringing staff on. The thing is, if we bring staff on, the the cost may be a little higher. In addition to that, we'd still need to have contract services anyways because we don't have the depth and the scope for building and safety services. So the county provides all of these services, you know, engineering review soils, building and safety, construction, engineering. We do not have all of that. We'd have to hire more of those staff. We definitely could look at a piecemeal kind of process with adding in staff to see if that's a possibility. But right now, the Community Development Department runs fully off permits, especially the building and safety. So I would definitely try to keep the services at the same level. The contractors do a little better job than, we love the county by the way. We've been with them since 1959, but they're a little bit slower because they're a bigger wheel. So they take a little bit of time, but we think if we get the right firm in here to do the building safety services, they could turn plan checks around faster than 10 days. So I think this will be advantageous for the city to turn our page from our county partners. We're gonna miss them, but I think a lot of the cities that I've surveyed, they seem to like the third party versus the county and some of the council. You talked to our council members and they seem to like it. But we can definitely look at and see what those costs are of it, you know, and bringing in some staff on board for building and safety. Sorry, it's a long answer, but I want to give the history to you. I like the residents that I talk a lot. Thank you.
Well, there is one other comment is that the COG, and this has come up many times in discussion with the city council, the COG planner. They have a contract with, I believe, engineers and whatnot for the planning. So it's not just one person, but an actual firm. So maybe we could possibly check into who they're using and see maybe even if there could be some kind of an agreement, reduce costs, what have you. So if you want, if staff wants to reach out to the COG and see who they're using.
Well done. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Frank Talavira.
Yeah, I just wanted to state also that I I'm looking at this as like maybe a temporary fix for the meantime, but I would also like us to see how we can develop the staff so that we can have our own in-house personnel and and take on these duties on a more permanent basis. And so I just wanted to publicly say that, that I would, I'm looking forward to maybe to to more having a more permanent staff person here on on site in in our building department than than just a quick fix.
I agree. Any further discussions on this item? What is the pleasure of this body concerning such?
I would go with statute of procedure, number one, authorize staff to move forward with RFP process.
Okay, so that'd be the motion?
Yes.
Okay, any second?
I'll second.
May I, may I just ask councilmembers that we also, and Director, maybe you can help me with this, but but adopt staff's proposed number of hours per week? Because I know that you had asked for that to be increased.
So this motion would keep it around the same in terms of existing services, about eight inspections per day by the buildings inspector and about 10 to 12 hours for our civil engineer.
Let me ask the maker, is that, is that okay?
That's okay, yeah.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Pat Kearney and I think Suarez is gonna second it? Okay, and seconded by Councilmember Bernard Suarez. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number 12, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item 13. Appropriate additional funding for fiscal year 2324 for street rehab.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Lucha Rodriguez again, presenting to you what, in in a sense, is the completion of of the latest paving project we are doing at the city. However, they are completing striping this week in a few areas that for several reasons they just couldn't finish before. But this is somewhat of the final report. On June 16 of 2025, City Council awarded the construction contract to sequel contractors to complete the fiscal year 2324 street rehabilitation project, as well as a fiscal year 2425 sidewalk replacement projects. These are two projects in in one. At the, the total allocated funds for the project as a whole was $2,201,000. Projects breakdowns are are simple. The bid amount came in just short of 1.8 million. We had about 10%, 15% of contingency for the project, as well as $110,000 for construction inspection, for the total project cost of $2.179 million. Construction started in July and the project was completed within the 80 days of of the contract. That was in October, at the end of October 2025. During construction, staff identified different mini projects, if you would, that we could take care of as part of the same project. For example, a sinkhole on 166th Street, and which is in a way just a fix of of the pavement, but a little exploratory. And that, taking care of that saved us about $100,000 minimum in designing another project. Additionally, because we had an excellent price for the materials of paving, for the asphalt itself, staff extended the limits and we got Condon Avenue paved for a few blocks, as well as doing an increased amount of concrete work at the same time. It's listed here, we have about 450 feet of curb and garden additionally, eight curb ramps additional, and a lot of sidewalk that we were able to cover as other quantities here. Also, because the project was taken care of sooner than the whole 80 days of inspection needed, because a good contractor project was done quickly, we had $30,000 and change in savings for inspection services, that those amounts go back to our funding source for the next project that we will start soon. Now, all these extra materials and everything cost us an additional $17,000. These $17,000 are already budgeted in the project. We just then appropriated when we awarded the contract. Why I'm here today is to ask for appropriation of $17,000 from the existing accounts and also approve a contract amendment to pay sequel contractors the increase in cost of $17,000. I also wanted to add, which I skipped, I'm so excited about the news, that this actually was designed in house by by Public Works, and that saved us between 100 and 200,000 if we would have gone outside. So we achieved quite a bit of paving. Good work for the city of Longdale with easy $300,000 savings to the residents. So staff recommends that you please appropriate $17,000 to the project and that we execute the contract amendment. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for the.
If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you for the report. Let's hear from Pat Kearney.
Okay, Lucha, two questions.
Yes, sir.
You said the staff designed the project in-house. It saved us between 100 and 200,000?
Yes.
Was that built into the allocated funding?
Yes. Good question. Typically, a contract does have the design allocated in there, inspection, everything needed, yes. So so we, instead of designing it with that money, we paved more with that money.
So the allocated funding should have been 2,400,000 or 2,100,000?
We work with what we have in the budget. So out of there, the the more money that we can put in the streets, we get farther improvements than with the same monies. But we work with the budgets appropriated that year depending on the accounts we pulled from.
And my second question is, remaining balance of allocated funding was 21,990, correct? I rounded it up.
Yes.
On the first page, it says remaining balance of allocated funding. We had 21,990?
Thank you, yes. That's that's something that is in the budget right now.
Okay, and then on page two, you have services related and completed in construction ahead of schedule. The original contract was for 110,000. You came in at, what was it, 80,000? There was a savings of 34,447,44. So you combine those two together minus the 17,000. So we have a surplus of 35,734?
Yes.
We can put it somewhere else, correct?
Correct. It goes back, thank you very much for 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 the observation. That money goes back to the next year's paving project, where we can go farther.
Those are my questions, Mr. Barr.
Okay, thank you. What is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
I'll motion to approve a staff recommendation.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Cuevas that we approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Frank Talavira. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number 13, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, let's move on to item J, City Manager's Report. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, I'm gonna cede some of my time over to Mr. Mentor with the Community Services Department. Here's an announcement.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and members of the community. I just wanted to talk briefly about the Angel Tree Lighting Event that's scheduled for this Friday. As the captain mentioned during her remarks, it is from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We're very excited to have our synthetic skating, our snow sledding, in which we brought in or bringing in a lot more snow than last year to give everybody even more opportunity to to play. We're also gonna have more than 15 different performances on stage. So we're very thankful to our partners in the community from the Longdale Elementary School District and their rap program, to our Losinger High School that's having their band and majorates and cheer team come, to some of our contract class instructors that are also having their other students work on different performances. So it's gonna be a very full-stage experience. We're gonna have, I think, nine different food vendors. So we should have everything that you could ever want to whet your appetite. And we're excited to have the community join us at 4 o'clock right here in the Civic Center on Friday. Any questions? I'm here to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And that, thank you, Jason. And then I'm gonna go ahead and thank the council, the mayor, the council, the CEO's office staff, the community. As many of you know already, it was in the media. Unfortunately, you know, I was hoping it wouldn't get out there, but you know, I guess it's like a big deal to them out there. To us, it's, you know, it's different. To us, it's different here, but it got out in the media. So, I was hoping to wait till the next meeting to let the council know, I want to thank you very much, Mayor, and the community and staff for all your support. I have accepted a position with the City of Ucaipa. I'm going to miss this community, I've been here almost 10 years. I've enjoyed my time here. I have nothing but good things to say about the City of Longdale and all the accomplishments under your leadership and guidance of the council, staff support and the community, it's been immense. I mean, we wouldn't be able to do these things without the leadership of the mayor and council and get these things done, and the empowered staff to get them done. And we went out there and we brought you a Sprouts, we brought you a Target, we went out there and really brought in these new businesses. And even the little HVAC place, AC Pro, is doing very well next to McDonald's in that old vacant building that's been vacant for so long and it's generating so much sales tax. I'm going to have a great team here, I'm going to miss everybody. And again, I just want to thank everyone, because I don't want to be long-winded tonight like there isn't. So, I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity, the support, and especially a special thanks to the mayor and council for giving me this chance and opportunity to be your city manager. I'm very thankful to everyone on the council, and I don't say that without any reservation, I mean that I was able to build up and it's time for me to move on, though. And I know council's been getting calls and I wanted to spell any rumors, even though there's closed sessions there, I didn't, things didn't happen, nothing went wrong. I just want everyone to know, this process took a few months. I had to notify the council, give them a 45-day notice, they couldn't say anything because of confidentiality with the other city. So, I just want everyone to know, this has been a, it's sad, but I have to go, I have to move on to my next city and move on. Thank you, Pat. And that's it, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Those are good words, nicely put. Okay, let's move on to-
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt, but before we move on, we actually skipped over the minutes for the successor agency, G8. If we could go back to that really quick, please.
Actually, ma'am, the mayor did announce that both consent calendars were being done with one vote, so-
Okay, just wanted to double-check because-
So, F and G were done together.
Okay, just wanted to double-check, thank you.
Thank you for double-checking.
Thank you very much, thank you for checking.
Yeah, thank you. That's it from Councilmember Frank Telavira.
Okay, thank you all again for being here and this opportunity to serve as one of the council members here on the City of Longdale. On the 18th of November, I attended Independence Day Ad Hoc Committee, so that is looking good and I'm really excited of what we're going to have for 4th of July, God willing. And then on the 21st, I had lunch with the seniors, and then on Monday, I went to the senior Thanksgiving luncheon, had a good time there. Want to thank Jason and his team for always providing us with a wonderful time there. I know we had our entertainer skipped out at the very last minute, but everybody was still happy, everyone was still good, and the seniors, we just gave us more time to talk and have a good conversation. And so, I want to always thank Jason and his team for always giving us an outstanding reason to celebrate and share our moments of Thanksgiving. And then on the 27th, I just wanted to say I hope that everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving and we spent it with my family in Hesperia, and I just hope that everyone also had a time of reflection. And now that the cat is out of the bag, I just want to congratulate our city manager on his appointment to the City of Ucaipa. And I want to thank him personally for the support during my first year on the City Council. Thank you for your leadership. I think, you know, I don't have anything to judge it against, but I just think, I want to say thank you, but I remember the words of Dr. Cheryl White as superintendent from Sentinel Valley, and she would tell her principals, "If you're not working 80 hours, then you're not doing your job." And I know when I started coming here, there was some comments made about him working extra hours and him being here on Saturdays, him being here on holidays, and I said, "Good, he should be," you know? And so, I just hope we find someone as gifted and that cares for Longdale, and that's going to be our number-one priority, is that we get someone to fill those shoes and also protect the things that we're fighting for. But I just want to wish you well and Godspeed on your new journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from Councilwoman Suarez.
Okay, thank you. I had a board of directors' meeting for the South Bay Cities Council of Government. We had also our volunteer recognition dinner. We did have a Longdale resident, I'm so sorry, I can't remember the name, that did have a lot of volunteer hours, so we are thankful for that. And other than that, I don't think I had anything else. Maybe just some advice for the city manager on your new journey. Just remember, there's five council members, each one is weighted. Elections come and go, so it's very important to maintain that. Kindness doesn't always mean weakness, and treat others the way you wish to be treated. And I will be praying for you and your journey in your next role. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from Councilwoman Quavis.
I attended the Ad Hoc Independence Day Committee. Hopefully, we could put a good show together with the help of Jason and the rest of the team. It's still in the works, it's not set in stone, because there's a lot of little items that we have to pick and work around. But hopefully, soon we'll be able to have more information for everybody. Sean, thank you for being part of the city. Good luck in your next journey and, you know, like Bernadette said, there's five people who are council members and mayors. Everybody's equal, so, but I know you'll do great wherever, in your new city.
Thank you. Let's hear from Mr. Pro Tim, Pat Kearney.
It's my time of the season where I turn into Grant, so I didn't intend anything. But to Mr. Moore, he's not a doctor in my eyes, because I asked him to check out my bunions, my bunions, he couldn't do anything with it, so he's not a doctor. I call him Moore, he's a great ride with you when you were community development director, city manager. We had our differences, we both got hostile of each other, but that's part of living, that's part of being adults, and hashing out things. Your new journey to Ucaipa, I don't even know where that's at. Must be a little redneck town somewhere out east of us. But it's been an honor and a pleasure working with you, and I'll come and see you at Ucaipa, wherever it is. I might have to take a mule train to get there, but I'll get there, okay? And with that, I pass it on to you.
All right, thank you. I attended a regular lunch with the seniors, not the Thanksgiving lunch, but just the regular lunch. Mr. Dr. Moore, you came as Mr. Moore, but you're leaving as Dr. Moore. How is that? Is that all right? That's not too bad, huh? I want to just thank you for your commitment to this community. You came in as the community development director, and at that job, you was committed. And you continue your commitment to the city because you realized we gave you an opportunity to serve as a city manager, your first post as city manager. And you did a fine job. The road was not easy, and it was filled with countless hours, like the council member said, you was here all the time, endless hours, including holidays, that quite frankly, other city managers wasn't around those holidays. I think I've been through five city managers, is it five or six? And I can say that you are the only city manager, probably the only city manager, that attended holiday events, all of the events, most of them, I should say. And for that, you should be commended. I have one word to say that describes you, and I've already said it, and that's committed. You are committed to your art, that's why you worked hard on getting your doctorate degree, which will serve you well in your next post, as it has served us well during the time in which you have used your degree as a city manager for the City of Longdale. But I want to thank you for your hard work and your dedication and commend you for your next chapter of your city manager career. I don't know where Ucaipa is either.
I don't know, is it California?
Who knows? That sounds like that's in Nevada City somewhere, Arizona or somewhere, but who knows? But we look forward for you doing good things, and all I have to say is, as city manager of the City of Longdale, job well done. Thank you. And with that, we'll go into closed session. Mr. City Attorney, give us a provision for which we'll go in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have actually four tonight. Under Government Code Section 54956.9D4, potential initiation of one case of litigation. Under Government Code 54956.9D2, two cases of significant exposure to litigation, and under 54957B, the appointment of a city manager. Thank you.
I'm sorry, are you sure there's four? I see three on the agenda.
Well, two potential litigation cases. So, there's the anticipated one, there's two under potential, but we'll lead you through them.
Oh, I see, I see here.
We'll do it as quickly as we can, sir.[1316.04] We'll do it as quickly as we can, sir.
Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As to item 15, potential initiation of litigation, no reportable action was taken, although the council was briefed and gave non-reportable direction. As to item 16, for one of the two cases, no reportable action was taken, although the council was briefed. As to the other, on a four-to-one vote with Councilmember Suarez voting against, their direction was given to the mayor to sign a contract that would resolve the matter if certain terms were approved. And if that is done, then to bring the matter back on consent calendar in two weeks as a receive-and-file matter and for public availability of the document. As to the public employee appointment, no reportable action was taken. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I'll get you. Okay, I'm going to ask the pro tem to read the adjournment.
Okay, to now be closing this meeting and adjournment in memory of Joe E., not Joey, Joe E. Castillo, father of former San Diego Valley Union High School District Board Member Sandra Suarez and grandfather, Councilwoman Bernadette Suarez recently passed away. Joe moved to Londo in 1956, where he bought his first home and raised five children. He loved living in Londo and, in his later years, would be spotted socializing in the community and dining at those fine restaurants such as Spira's and McDonald's, along with his late wife Cora Castillo. He is survived by five children, 48 grandchildren, and over 100 great-grandchildren. He passed away at the age of 93. The council meeting on December 1st, 2025 is adjourned in memory of Joe E. Castillo. The Londo City Council extends our condolences to the Councilwoman Suarez and her family for the loss of a loved one.
Thank you for that. Okay, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, December 15th, 2025, in these here chambers. It is now 8:24. We adjourn.
It's amazing. It's amazing. Amazing, amazing.